We'll start out with opening prayer. Today is also National Day of Prayer, too. So would anybody like to give opening prayer? Yeah, Mike on, that's Mike on.
Anybody want to go with prayer? The volunteers. The only thought we come before your day to say thank you for your love and mercy and grace that you made new for us. Lord, we thank you for the guiding spirit. Help us to stay focused on your will, Father God, and not our own. Help us to come together as a community and as a county to do the best for everybody in this county. We got a lot of different ideas and good ideas and different opinions, but we all need to come together at the table to work together to make this county grow. We just thank you for your blessings each and every day. Please forgive us of our sins and shortcomings in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Prayer or pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then you see it. As everybody knows, I don't ever stay on schedule and stuff like that, so I'm telling expect anything different today. Before we get started, the auditor needs to speak first because she has to go to another meeting. Then Beth will jump over here and take over, so Sheila, it's all yours.
She was gonna go through the other stuff first, but it's fine.
No, I'm letting you take over.
Okay, um, you have your financial reports.
Yes.
What's going on with the things that I normally would. Obviously, the cash balances are down a little bit.
Yes.
Based on, on claims as you'll, when you get to claims, see there's three hundred and ten thousand just for insurance that was taken out this time. So this will rebuild as we transfer from the other departments that owe the funds for the, for that balances. You have in your stacks over there, things that will, will need to be addressed. The top one is the storage units.
Yes.
That one needs a motion from the commissioners to allow me to remove Suzanne Zimmerman off and add myself to the unit so that we can start making the monthly deposits. We haven't done anything since February. There's pretty good sum of money that'll go in there as soon as we get that done.
Okay, this for the public. We do have storage units. At this moment, we're not going to be in the storage unit business much longer. That's just my opinion. But right now, we need to, I need to make a motion to remove Suzanne Zimmerman off the bank account and add Sheila Reeves to the bank account so she can take care of all the business transactions.
I'll second.
All in favor of two oh? Okay, Sheila.
The next bank related thing is the credit cards. Crane can give it to us. This was discussed a couple of months ago. However, they're pending waiting to process them because we have to actually open an account. All we have to put in it is five dollars, but we have to have an account with the bank in order to get the credit cards the way we requested. So I need permission to open a bank account in home county government for the credit card purposes.
I make a motion that Sheila Reeves, authorize Sheila Reeves to open up the bank account for credit card purposes.
I'll second.
All in favor of two oh? Keep rolling. We'll be out of here in just a little bit.
Going back to the claims there, again, we have gotten as far as we, we can and updated slowly, gaining some ground on all of the highway claims and getting people paid. Pretty much right now, we'd be five hundred thousand dollar additional appropriation that you've asked for from the council, which will be, council has moved their monthly meeting to May the nineteenth instead of May the twelfth. So May the twentieth, we will be able to get those claims or those line items out, out of the way.
Good.
The ARPA fund, yesterday, the annual report was due for the ARPA fund. You do have forty-six thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars, I believe, left in that fund plus the interest on the funds. I need permission. Gary was the second contact on there. I need a motion to add one of you two commissioners on there. They have to have at least two contacts.
That's, now I know on that ARPA money, the biggest part of the interest money that is here has been committed to the radial tower project. That is correct, Sheila. But we do have forty-six thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars left over out of that interest money, correct?
Out of the ARPA money.
Okay.
The interest money actually is currently a hundred and ninety-one thousand.
Okay, but that's been, most of that's been committed to the radial tower project. Okay, I'll make a motion to put myself on, what did you call it?
The ARPA fund.
Yeah, thanks.
Contact.
I'll be the contact with ARPA fund.
I'll second.
All in favor of two oh? Okay.
Capital Improvement Plan. We're in the process, I believe the attorney is working on it and hopefully within the next couple of meetings that we'll be able to have a plan to present.
Here's, let's, let me jump in on that. These plans are typically done by municipal advisors, municipal financial advisors. They're typically not done by lawyers because they involve spreadsheets and just looking at budgets and cash flows and things like that. And I know the county has used one locally in the past to help on some finance issues, but it sounds like that financial advisor, I don't remember the person's name.
Jeff Peters?
Peters Consulting, Jeff Peters.
Okay, so you could use them. If you don't want to use them, you know, I recommend some additional financial advisors that do a lot of this work in Indiana. It's how you want to proceed, but, but I'm not really in a position where I can do it. It's just not, that's not how lawyers do it.
Okay. Well, I think since Jeff Peters has been involved with the county for years and he's been a good financial advisor, we'll just refer this to Jeff Peters, Peters Consulting, let him take, take kind of lead on this and see what we need to get done.
Yeah, I think, I think the capital permitting plan, based on what your needs are, is to focus on roads.
Roads, yes. Well, I know that Greg and Chad have been out many days and stuff and getting the list of, and they sent the list to, I know, to, for the federal. Hopefully, we'll get some fair little assistance, but they have a pretty good dialogue on what we need for roads and what it's going to cost, so. Okay. Then I guess we'll get, we'll probably need to get ahold of Jeff Peters then. Okay, alright, sounds good. Okay, Sheila, you're moving right along here.
Let me do your whole agenda because it's laying in that pile. Sorry.
Long if you stay.
Okay, so you have, these are pending. You'll have to go back to them, but you have the BOMAC agreement. The WTH grant is laying over there, AME webpage.
Let's do the, you don't do the BOMAC first? Yes. For anybody out there, and I know sometimes this is sore subject for some people, it's, it's not really sore subject for me, but BOMAC, you guys are aware of this. There was a distributor truck ordered back in twenty twenty-three, correct? It was brought to the commissioners and it was also, we presented to the council about the financing, but they said, wait till the truck got here, then we'd do the financing. The trucks here, there's been some concern about, do we need the truck? Could've, would've, should've. And, and I understand because the, the amount of the truck is three hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars sixty-seven cents. That's pretty tough being in our financial situation. But the fact of it is, the, the company, the truck was ordered. The company did what they were supposed to do. They got the truck made. They got it shipped, ready to go. The truck's here, okay? I'm not going to fault the company for doing what they was asked to do. Now, I know we got a little financial situation or a big financial situation going on, but we do have means necessary, and I've talked to Sheila about this. The, the first payment is not due until
February of twenty twenty-six.
You can do a five-year, six-year, or seven-year lease. We're going, my recommendation is do the five-year lease. We are obligated to pay for this truck because the company was ordered. You know, it's, it's not fair to them to say, now we don't want the truck. I did speak to Donna C- Cottrell, Cottrell? As well as Joe Frye, County Councilman Joe Frye. He's involved as well. Mr. Cottrell said that if we get into a situation to where we don't need the truck or it's not going to be utilized or it's not going to be in our best interest, or if the finances are not there, whatever the case may be, that they'll find a buyer for the truck. Okay? But with that being said, we can't hold them, their feet to the fire because of what was already agreed to be done in twenty twenty-three. Does that make sense to the public? I don't want nobody upset. Ryan, you okay there? Yeah, smiles all the time. So this is a lease agreement from NCL. It's a government capital leasing agency, and BOMAC is the distributor. It's my recommendation that we take the five-year lease. The payment will be February, the first payment's not due to February twenty twenty-six. So it gives us some time, Greg and guys. I've talked to Sheila. We have avenues to pay for this. And I'm glad that we don't have to make the first payment to February twenty twenty-six. That helps a bunch. So the annual lease payments will be eighty-one thousand seventy-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. My motion is to accept a five-year lease agreement, and that starts in February of twenty twenty-six.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I know, once again, there's going to be some people saying, heaven dear God, you just spent three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. I didn't. He didn't. That was done in twenty twenty-three. They should have took the money back in twenty twenty-three, allocated the money in three hundred and thirty-seven dollars, that, whatever it was, and put that money set aside so they could pay for the truck. It didn't work out that way. It didn't happen. We're not going to go back and beat a dead horse. It is what it is. We're going to pay for the truck. And if these two guys and Commissioner Riss who's over the highway department, they determine is this truck's going to fit the needs of home county, great. If it works, it's going to do what we need to do, then, then we're going to utilize the truck. If it's not going to work in, for the betterment of the county, or maybe we can help other counties, maybe we can swap and trade some work. We'll do the best we can. Whatever works out, keep the truck, or if you need to sell the truck, sell the truck. Anybody got any questions out in the public? I disperish. Okay, next, Sheila.
Um, the rest of them, you can, you guys can just do them as you come to them.
Okay.
We are going to need some personnel policy conversation. If we can do an administrative meeting somewhere along the line, we'll get together with a meeting, but we do have some of the policies that need updated or changed, so.
And, and that kind of goes to, and I know I'm, I'm probably getting off the schedule on the agenda. Some of the personnel policies that need to be, well, the whole handbook needs to be gone through, balance with the personnel policies, good and bad. We are in the process of getting a job description for human resources through, what is it, Wagner?
Wagner Earle and Chill.
Wagner Earle and Chill. They're putting together a job description and we're putting together a scope of work. We're working on that. Hopefully, to have that to the council at their meeting here in May. Because I'm not backing off from a human resources officer. Not going to do it. If we'd had a human resources officer a long time ago, some of the bull crap that's been going on that's happened in the county wouldn't have happened. Or if it had have happened, they'd been able to deal with it. The county commissioners are not human resources people, and the county attorney, attorney has made it very clear that he will not be the human resources officer. And to be honest with you, he shouldn't be. But things have happened and we're going to get a human resources officer here because that way people have somebody they can talk to, go to, and they can facilitate work things out. See what I'm saying? In the meantime, it's coming, it's a long time overdue. We've been working on this for, how long, Sheila? Ten years?
Please.
It's a long time. With the county this side, we've got a hundred and, how many employees? We have a hundred and forty?
Two hundred and five.
Two, wow. We've got two hundred and five employees and we don't have a human resources administrator. That's wrong. Got to have one. So hopefully, we'll have everything squared away for the council at their meeting at, at the end of May, and we can move forward to get in somebody. It's a contracted position. It's not a county employee position. It's a contracted position. Okay, so we're on the move. We're headed the right direction. It's taking a little longer than we thought, but good things come to those who wait. What else you got, Sheila?
Mid-America claim that came in. We need a motion to approve out of the CUM cap fund to pay the balance due.
Yeah, this claim from Mid-America, when I, when I got sent that, I was like, for the love of God. I mean, yeah, whoa. The total bill for Mid-America was eighty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. This is, was for elevator update. Now, we installed a new elevator years and years ago when I was a maintenance supervisor, and I don't know how much it costs to have that elevator installed, but to have an up, upgrade of eighty-seven thousand dollars, pretty expensive. I'm not sure what. But I want to read this. I'm not going to read it to you. This was done in November of twenty twenty-three. Okay, they've been paid a certain amount and we owe them. How much we owe them, Sheila?
Fifty-two thousand five hundred and ninety.
Fifty-two thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. This agreement that was done in twenty twenty-three has nothing to do with us, but we're bound by this agreement to pay these people, and we owe them, so we're going to pay them. You could, I'll make a motion to pay Mid-America the balance owed for the elevator upgrade.
I don't like it, but I'll second it. I mean, they, these bills like this have got the
Out of the CUM cap fund.
Out of the CUM cap fund.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on that bill?
Well, absolutely.
Was, was there an itemized bill showing what work was done?
Yes.
To come up to that amount of money?
Yeah, it's all, it's expensive. It's very expensive. Yeah, I went through the bill and I seen what they did, and I mean, you know, just to open the door costs you, you know, like five thousand dollars. I'm just kidding, but.
Well, I'm, you know, for somebody sitting on the bill, you don't know how the bills come in, so we don't know if it's itemized to break down everything they done.
It's, we wouldn't pay for it if it wasn't.
Right.
It is an itemized bill and it is expensive, and I know elevator stuff's expensive, but everything's expensive. But still, this was something that was signed in twenty twenty-three, so it's nothing that we have any jurisdiction over, so to speak. It's got to be, it's got to be paid. We owe them this money. So we make, we approved that motion, Sheila, two oh, probably CUM cap. Now, go ahead. I, can we talk about this real quick? Is that part of it?
Yeah.
I know the gentleman's here from WTH. How you doing, sir?
Good, sir.
Come on up. I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. Going to just put you on the spot, okay?
Sean Scott, WTH.
Now, Sean, you doing okay?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate all the help that you've provided for us and stuff like that. This proposal, have you talked to the nine-one-one director about this?
The former nine-one-one director, we were here in October.
Okay.
And that's who we initially.
And I, I don't want you to think I'm delaying you for any particular reason at all. Ashley couldn't be here the day the director, because, does she work last night? I think she said, or something like that. I can't keep track. Will you do me a favor? I'm, I'm going to give this to her, okay? And the advisory board, I got a couple of copies. Can you come back at our second meeting?
Absolutely.
So we can get this. I want the advisory board to look at it. I don't know if the county attorney's looked at this or not, but he will. Then we'll give Ashley a copy of this so she can look at it and go from there. Can you come back in two weeks?
Yeah, okay. Uh, what is, what is the next date?
Well, that's.
Fifteenth at six P M.
Six P M. Or if you, if, I know we, I know we got ninety days.
I think I can.
If you can't make that, the next meeting would be the first meeting.
I mean, if we, if we go to the next one, I'll have that date changed, but we're, we're doing, we're going to, we'll come up with something between now.
If you can come back, I'll make sure you're at the first of the list. That way you can come and get this taken care of, then, then you can get you out the door.
Yeah, and, and just to kind of help you out with this, the, it's basically what it is is meeting the national standard, the NINA standard.
Right.
That the state raised, and so the grant's been provided by the GIO office, and the funds are already there, and there's no match to it. So it's basically just you guys moving forward to be federally compliant.
It is pretty cut and dried from what I've looked at and stuff like that. I don't want to.
Now, the thing it does not do is it does not change anything. It does not modify anything. Basically, it's creating the addresses to meet the standard that they've raised. They have, like, right now, your address may be fifteen thirty-two West Moore Road or something of that nature. It's a simple five features. They, national government, federal, whoever wants to say, they've created it to have thirty-five features. And then in that, the move forward is for elevation. So it used to be you, you had an address and it was basically a kind of a ruler on the road. Now, nobody has phones, it's landline phones, so everybody's got cell phones. So now you're talking about GPS latitude, longitude. That's what they're trying to identify. And step two is elevation. So I look here and I see some second-story buildings. You could literally occupy the same GPS latitude, longitude, but yet be on the second floor. So that's where they're moving forward.
Wow.
Of course, there's other places in the world that have bigger buildings than us. But, yeah, so that's kind of just move forward is to, is that everybody is on the same standard. It's when they started this back in, gosh, I want to say nineteen, in the, in the eighties, when they established nine-one-one, where everybody called a specific number, they kind of left everybody up to do their own thing. And now they're to the point, they're like, all right, I'll give you a chance. Now we all have to be on the same page. And I run into this a lot if I have a lot of my counties, like Posey County, for example. Illinois, Indiana, Kentucky, and you could be on the river and be looking at three different standards. So they're just making it to be a federal standard. So absolutely no problem. I'll get with Sheila and make sure that everybody gets a chance to review it, and any questions.
And I appreciate all you're doing for us. I think you're a great.
Like I said, reach out to us anytime. You've got a great worker back here now. I'm really enjoying working with Jason. He's a, he's a good guy.
Good. Yeah, decent. He, he does well. Alright, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Sheila.
Um, I'm, two more things. The Maximus.
Right here.
Yes. The auditor's portion of Maximus provides us the annual reports and review.
Please explain this.
This is the contract with Maximus for the auditor's office. They do our monthly and annual reporting that is required for the child support portion.
Yeah, this is required state guidelines. We do, it's, it's nothing new. It is for child support. They file our annual, monthly reports. We have to do it. We're, we're bound by it. So I make a motion that we sign the maximum agreements for the auditors so she can handle the child support part.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
I think you can figure out the rest unless you.
Oh, I can't figure out anything.
Okay. Okay.
Don't ask me to figure out nothing, guys. No.
Okay, we done did BOMAC, WTH, the BCA board appointment.
What about the, let's, uh, let's move to AME webpage. What about the, let's uh, let's move to uh A M E webpage proposal agreement. Where's that at?
It should be in your packet. This is what he discussed with you guys in your last meeting that you had with him. What was the other gentleman's name that was here?
Well, I have a few other things to kind of address real quick if you don't mind.
Come on, come on up.
Okay. For the public.
Introduce yourself.
Yeah, Orion Saft with the A M E group. And again, some of this is more for the public, but just some follow up as well. Um, after being assigned duties for um I T assistance, um, I think at this point we've identified several things that needed fixed immediately. Um, email issues should be fixed and flowing at this point. It's my understanding, everybody who's had that issue, that has been tested and I believe we're in good shape there. If not, feel free to uh reach out to me shortly after this. I worked with John Lauter on the camera software issues. There was some connectivity stuff initially going on there. Obviously a security issue that we need to get fixed and we've got that taken enough, taken care of and up to speed at this point. Um, all the new employees, Heather and Sean, uh Jason, they're all in their new locations. Um, the last I heard, everyone was connected devices. She just confirmed she now has the VPN access, so has remote capabilities. Uh, per your request, the service manager and I met with several of the department heads a couple of weeks ago to address how to get I T assistance how it's needed. And I believe everyone now has that number and PIN. Any of the department heads should be sharing that information with any of the employees that can make that phone call to get that assistance now. Uh, there is a new backup solution in place, what I'd call more of a business grade solution. Uh, the one time project cost now saves the county nearly fifteen thousand dollars a year uh reoccurring uh over and over. Um, so um keeping this in place saved a substantial amount of money. Um, so going against the theme of having to spend some money today, I was able to save you some money, Sam.
Well, praise God.
That same thing goes with the Office three sixty five licenses with Beth's help and a few others. We were able to remove inactive users, uh creating an additional savings of nearly four hundred dollars a month. Um, so those two combined kind of just streamlined the process of what was going on. The idea is uh in, in, in conjunction with what we'd consider best business practices, if we were able to uh, you know, dissolve our business agreement and someone else would come in, there should be an easy handoff between that and the next person that comes in as opposed to some of the things that we identified that weren't, you know, typically standard. Um, all the employees at this point also have an upgraded E D R security for the cybersecurity liability uh insurance that um was just recently, um, I believe that was the finalization of that.
It was. I think it's all done.
So that is now in place and you guys um have good subscription to that insurance. So that being said, we did identify a few necessary projects and I'll speak clearly to this. It will not be an issue after today. I know the camera system in this room needs looked at and we pushed a few buttons prior to this and unfortunately didn't get in here in time to, I didn't want to break anything while this was going on. Uh, my agenda tomorrow will be to look at that in depth and make sure that that is one secure and also we don't have the issue of that blurriness that people are, are seeing. Um, I'd sent you pictures earlier today, more just I wanted to touch on it. It was um the server room slash I T room on the main level there. Um, it's been messy. Uh, there's going to need some um what I call I T hygiene down there.
I mean, I want you to ever look at that on my phone. This is our server room downstairs.
It just needs cleaned up.
It's a mess.
Our cabling vendor and I worked and walked through um the, the camera system in itself. We had some things kind of dangling, just some, some, it just needs some, some really good attention. Um, and then of course, there's um probably outdated machines and stuff that I need to pluck the hard drives out of, keep those in a secure environment, but also get that off, off site for you, just so that there's no security vulnerabilities there. Um, and and um I'll work with him on that. I don't believe it'll be expensive, it's probably a nominal fee to get that up and running, but we thought about getting a rack up on the wall, getting everything off there, those two metal carts out of there and get that cleaned up for you. And then the stuff really should be in good shape for you. And then of course, the website, which is why I'm sitting here in front of you today, a lot of this. Um, so we have partnership with Dave Martin. Dave Martin uh brought to us some attention as we were working through the e, or the email issue and where DNS lies and the migration of Owen County's website from Wix to WordPress. Um, so the main differences there, you have customization scalability, there's a little more flexibility what we can do because it's an open source platform. You're not designated to Wix's kind of like proprietary ecosystem, if you will. That allows for better, what we call S E O, which is search engine optimization. People can find your website, they know how to get around on your website, they know who to get in touch with on your website. He had plans on here to meet with every department, discuss information on the pages for the different departments, transfer the PDFs, forms and other media assets, or update them as needed. Uh, a little bit of a redesign, a couple of folks had asked for that during our meeting. Uh, recreate some of the contact information request form, some of that may be outdated at this point, including commissioner from what I understand. Um, then additional training, he's going to meet with all the department heads, all the designated staff, supply documentation, they'll understand how to get in, make some adjustments. We'll have administrative rights to that and we'll also have backup support. Uh, so if there's issues with that, we have the ability to do that. Um, there's estimated costs on page two with that, but the other thing that I would bring to your attention is currently, um, I believe it's section five oh eight is what they call it. It's the Rehabilitation Act and Americans with the A D A. Um, it, we are not compliant currently, so if someone um, it is a loss of sight, wants to come in and view your website, they do not currently have that capability from my understanding. Uh, this is a federal compliance that, that are standard, I guess, that you guys are not in compliance with. And this will help um with that as well. We have until April of twenty six to get there. But with what's going on, the nominal cost that goes along with it, uh, I wanted to bring that up. So that's kind of mine in a nutshell for you, Sam.
Probably got any questions about this? Uh, I do want to go over a couple of things with you, sir.
Yep.
If you don't mind. Uh, first of all, uh, I want to thank you, what you and your company has done. Once again, not here to badmouth anybody, throw anybody under the bus by no means. Water's already entered the bridge, but um, you know, A M E come in here and uh started looking around and stuff and corrected a, a few issues, um, to say the least. We had some security issues. Just trying to be mild about it and they handled that. A couple of the issues, uh, you know, was security issues that um need to be handled pretty aggressively and they did that and I thank them for that because we was kind of vulnerable there for, for a little spelt. And I know he, the, the backup uh on the servers, stuff like that, and I'm not an I T person, so if, if I misspeak and Serge would jump all over me. You know, they was never um cycled through, if that's the word.
Wasn't tested properly, you know, and, and in a timely manner as well. We couldn't really qualify when the last good backup had been tested. Um, in this case, we have, you know, the new structure has something in place that gives us that opportunity to do that on quarterly basis.
Right. And our, and our website, uh, you know, um, and once again, I'm not a technology person. I don't do social media and websites and stuff like that, but a website is a place to find, for the public to find accurate information about the county and every department. Every department with elected official, department head or whatever, needs to be on the website or your page or whatever you want to call it and putting out information to the public, letting the public know where they can go, who they can talk to, what number to call, uh, what's happening with your department and so on and so forth. The more information we can get to the public, the better off we are because, you know, expecting the commissioners to relay this type of information to the public is, is, we, we can't do that in every meeting. So websites are going, are going to be great. I appreciate Orion bringing the gentleman another day, a couple of weeks ago and he discussed this with us. I, I think it's a win-win situation for the county. It's something that's been needed for a long, long time. And you know, I approve of it. Uh, I, I think we need to move forward. One thing we're not going to do is move backwards. I've said that many times. We may regroup every now and then, but we're not going to back up. The county has been in the backing up business for way too long on different issues and we're not backing up anymore. We're moving forward. So I recommend that uh we move forward with the website, mid, mid migration agreement. I don't have any place on this to sign, sir. Is there?
I think if you just sign.
Just sign with this last page.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the website migration agreement.
I'll second.
All in favor? Two oh. Thank you, sir.
I've got a question, Samuel. The current data that we have on our pages being carried over to the new website.
However you want it to lay out, he'll make his view on that and he's going to have that discussion with what you want it to look like. If it's outdated information and he's updated, then the idea was all those new documents to be put in place if you have adjustments to the documents or whatever. Absolutely. So really it's going to be one-on-one basis, how you want it to look, how you want it to feel, what the information you need to get.
Okay.
There's also multiple pages.
Right.
Is that a, is there a, is there a one?
Uh, no, no, actually there was, um, yeah, so there's a, what I did touch on was everything in this code, but there's a, not a manual recreation, if you will, it's what he had, but basically a relink sixty plus some pages and content, any of those forms and whatnot. So that's over five hundred documents, sixty five pages. So all that will be reviewed. It'll be, is it done the way you want it? Currently, you want just to get a new kind of look and easier feel for it. All that information will stay intact unless somebody designates, it needs to be replaced or it needs to be updated.
Who's going to be in charge of that? We've got that W T H map that we paid a ton of money for a year or a while back that got three on the disc back here at one point and then it's kind of seemingly filtered away and I'm certain we're sure it's still paying a large amount of money for that. Who's?
Well, if you're asking me, I defer to the department head on any of this.
I don't think even the department head over. At one point was even updating that, the one that was supposed to be able to update live and all that. You know the answer to that?
Building departments, the last ones that had access to live updates.
Well, I mean, I, 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 I'm learning as well, so I think we'll just have to work through the process of what makes sense and then logically not just designate somebody, but have somebody encourage effort to say this is who this person needs to be then.
Do you have a timeline?
Yeah, so that's the other thing too. I mean, obviously this is a little bit of a, of an overhaul. So my guess is um anywhere from, it looks like he's estimated anywhere from ninety to a hundred hours. So you know what that means in real life is probably three to, and it's a broad range, but we give a three to six month fact thing, you know, from start to getting together the information to then testing it, to then making sure there's no broken links and all that to say, okay, go live and then we'll have a go hot key, but within that range right there. My guess is you'll start to hear from him sooner rather than later as far as the information gathering is still some.
And who will be contacting us?
So the gentleman's name is Dave Martin. And so he does, an expert in the field, that's why we uh partner with him. Uh, he's not an A M E associate, which of course he does and will have, uh, will understand the basics and have the admin credentials for backup and any type of administrative practices you do for if there are small minor adjustments.
So initial contact will come from A M E then?
He's not an A M E associate.
Drives.
Yeah.
Sheila, what's?
I need, she, Heather had asked at the last meeting to, for the escrow account, you guys are closing it, but you needed permission from me to take me off of it.
And she's on.
And then I'll give her permission to close it.
Yeah, okay. I thought that's what it was. Make a motion for the bank escrow account, uh, to take Sheila Reeves off the bank escrow account and we've added you two, Heather, and I can't remember your last name.
Huntington.
Huntington, to the bank escrow account. No, second. We're good.
Beth's taking over.
Beth's taking over.
I'm scared. Anybody want to down this?
What? Yeah. Okay, so we're just going to continue on here just a little bit to get rid, then we're going to back up and go through the claims and stuff. We have the Green County Lagoon Creek Basin Board. This is from the Green County Attorney. Uh, this is about um this um, it's the board regarding the Lagoon Creek Basin to which houses will ditch grains. I, I'm a little bit familiar with this. I know Greg's a little bit familiar with it. I've talked to the, the bill is, I've talked to the former surveyor, I've talked to the current surveyor. Uh, we're not doing anything at this time with this because the county attorney has to look through this. I'm going to ask the county attorney to speak to Bill on this matter as well as the former surveyor and the current surveyor. We're not going to sign anything that we don't need to be a part of. I, I do want, I need more information about this because I'm just kind of out of the woods. You know what I'm saying?
I'm a little curious why they changed the name of this.
I, I, I am clueless, so that makes two of us, so.
I think that's kind of, because they tried to scam us into paying.
Well, we're not going to, and you know, I mean, he presented it two weeks ago and, and I've heard about it and I, I am interested in it, but until the county attorney looks at this and, and speaks with you and the former surveyor and current surveyor and get the information, maybe Greg, he's been involved too, you guys need to collaborate, will not uh, will that.
Or the former and current also.
Jim Bryan, yes. So we're going to table that until further review. We're in no hurry, we're not in no hurry about this. Okay, now we're going to, we're going to back up to start from the beginning where I should have started from the beginning and I didn't. Okay, I make a motion uh that we approve uh the meeting minutes. From April seventeenth. If you read the minutes, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the April um seventeenth meeting, Board of Commissioners.
I'll second.
All in favor? Two oh. Claims, um, once again, we're doing uh well on the claims, especially the out of cycle claims. They're pretty much down to um basically uh just utilities and stuff like that. On this claim cycle, it's pretty, pretty substantial for the out of cycle claims, but we got three hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and thirty one dollars, thirty eight cents in liability insurance that comes out of this on out of cycle claims that has to be paid. So when I read that number to you, I don't want you to think, dear God, out of cycle claims is out of hand, we, we have to pay our insurance, correct? Beth?
Yes, it's already paid.
So uh, I make a motion uh that uh on payroll, uh, is three hundred and twenty six thousand, eight hundred and sixty two dollars and thirteen cents. I make a motion that we pay the payroll.
I'll second.
Regular claims, one hundred and eighty three thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and thirty nine cents. The highway claims, we're getting claims from highway, we're doing this separately so we can keep track. And the highway claims are sixty nine thousand, two hundred and twenty six dollars and fifteen cents. I make a motion that we pay the regular claims and the highway claims.
I'll second.
Okay. The total for out of cycle claims is three hundred and fifty eight thousand, four hundred and forty two dollars and ninety seven cents. I make a motion, this includes utilities, First National Bank, Epic Insurance and Visa Cards. I make a motion that we pay the out of cycle claims.
And I'll second.
Okay. Sheila's gone, but Beth, you may be able to uh help here, we have to wait to get back. Credit cards, the, um, we're getting different credit cards, we're trying to facilitate that. I'm not sure who all has credit cards. But I know that um one of the elected officials went to a meeting, um, a conference and the credit card was no good. Overdr, over, balance was out, whatever, maximize out and she had to use her own credit card. We're going to put an end to that.
Well, that was a fraud detection and they ended up closing that credit card and issuing a new one, which we didn't know. And that elected official, that happened in between that time. So that's why it was declined.
Well, I know when Dave and I went to our conference, they declined ours too. And we paid for it ourselves.
Oh, yeah.
So we're working on for the elected officials and people that go to conferences and stuff So we're working on for the elected officials and people that go to conferences and stuff like that. And I'm sure you've been in the same situation, Diane?
I have, where, you know, we have to reserve the room, and then you have to reserve it by credit card, but then we don't have enough. It's like we took our cards down so tight that we can't get our reservations because we have to have continuing ed, we are required. And just like if I hadn't gone to the one conference, I wouldn't have found out about redistricting that wasn't done in twenty-one.
Well, the, 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 the problem. The, the problem of it is, is, is the fact of it is that when we get to new cards, one card's going to be for conferences only. Because you can't have a card for conferences and toilet paper both. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, and the, and the limit was really low.
It was too low, so we'll get the limit up. But for conferences and stuff like that, there's going to be a card just for that. That way, we know what it is, and we know we can pay the bill, and then we pay the bill anytime on utilities, you know what I'm saying? So we're going to revitalize that. But for anybody that's been in that situation, I, I, I apologize, but we're going to get that rectified, so it's not fair.
And the state, um, and the hotels won't use the tax exempt if you use your own card.
I fought with them when I was up there, and I'm like, here, I'll just pay the tax. I went on about my own business, so. Okay. Once again, the human resources, we've talked about that, uh, we're on the roll about that. The jail project update. Well, we was on the roll this morning with that jail project update till I got a little bit of information, kind of thought we wrench in the gears, uh, which we can publicly discuss at the moment, which is unfortunate. We're going to be, uh, our county attorney, God love him, is going to, is going to be looking into some information to dissect a couple of things, to make sure everything is still on the up and up with the, the transfer of the property. We do have a second, uh, environmental study that came in. But the environmental study, I believe, was for more property than what the land swap was for. So that language had to be taken out of that part of the environmental study and rewrote. It talks about only the nine point some acres that we're going to swap for. But, um, we do have a couple of other things that we do have to look into now about that, just to make sure everything is on the up and up and square before we make the land swap. We'll not make no land swap until we've dotted every i and crossed every t. I think we're very close, and, uh, you know, we're ready. We've got to get a jail built, like soon, but I think we need to make sure that everything is squared. You agree with that, sir?
I do.
That's where we're at with the jail project. Okay. Greg, I'd hate to put you to last, but I'm going to put you last. Okay, is that all right with you?
Yes, sir.
So, um, department heads and elected officials.
I don't know if you want to do the precincts now?
Oh.
That paperwork?
Got it, right here, sorry. That's a resolution.
Yes.
You know what, you got a resolution number for me?
Number four.
Number four. Is that two-two-five-zero-four, sir?
Yes, zero-zero-four.
Zero-zero-four. Okay. Do you want to explain this, sir, to the people?
Sure. Back in twenty-twenty-one, the county should have engaged in redistricting and reprecincting, if necessary, because of the changes in the county population as part of the twenty-twenty census. For reasons I'm not aware of, that just didn't happen. So now we've got to go back and make sure that gets done. Really, there aren't very many, there aren't really many changes. The only thing significant that's happening, and this was discussed, I think, at the last meeting, David Shelton, who's the Knox County Clerk, came here and talked about what the county has to do in terms of engaging in redistricting and reprecincting. This resolution is just the follow-up to that. What this resolution does is split Marion Township into two precincts. And again, we have to do that because of the requirements in state law that we have districts that are, and precincts that are of equal size and are reasonably compact and that sort of thing. So that's what this is for. And I urge the commissioners to approve this.
Sure. On, but, on County Board of Commissioners, Resolution twenty-two-five-zero-zero-four. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of On- County of Onan, State of Indiana, establishing certain election precincts within Onan County, Indiana. Whereas Indiana code, I don't know if that's S three dash eleven dash one point five, requires each county within the state of Indiana to establish voter precincts. And whereas the Onan County Board of Commissioners, here and after, the commissioners pursuant to IC S thirty-six dash two dash three dash four are required to divide the county into four districts that are composed of continuous territories or reasonable, compact, and contain nearly equal population for election to and membership in the county fiscal body. And whereas, to comply with Indiana law, Marion Township must be divided into two precincts. It is hereby ordained that Marion Township will be divided into two precincts, Marion One and Marion Two. The map attached to this resolution defines the boundaries of these two precincts. I make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty-two-five-zero-zero-four in dividing the two precincts of Marion to Marion One and Marion Two.
I'll second.
All in favor? Two oh.
And I do, uh, I do have where it does have to be published in the newspaper.
Okay.
And I believe you guys have to give Sheila permission to do that. Um, it has to be advertised for ten days. So you can vote on giving permission. And I'm not sure at this point if the state is going to give us a prepared statement or if we have to have the attorney prepare one to be put into the newspaper.
I make a motion that the auditor's office, uh, put into the newspaper, the redistricting of, dividing of Marion One and Marion Two. Is that good?
Yep.
Diane?
I'll second.
All in favor, two oh. And you?
One more thing.
Oh, hell, Lou.
The, you know, until we turn this into the state, we won't know. The only thing that I can see that they might have us change, instead of a zero-one, just to a one or just to a two. Because I have seen that done, so if, if.
Now, what, what do you mean, as far as on the map, outreads or something, what do you mean?
Like, we're dividing, um, like Marion into one and two.
Right.
You have it listed as O-one and O-two. On some of them, it's listed, you know, just one, no zero in front of it.
Okay, okay.
No zero in front of the two. So we may have to amend that if the state tells us we have to do that. But we won't know until they look at the paperwork and send it back or accept it. That would be, that's the only thing, it's just going to take a zero off, doesn't change anything.
Do, do you know how long? Well, how long do you expect it to take for the state to approve? Do you have any idea?
I have no idea. I, I know we have to have it done by June third.
Right.
But, um, and I had a survey after the last meeting that I filled out, and I'm waiting for someone to contact me, so I'm, I'm probably going to reach back out because I want to make sure with my email issues that I used to have, that I'm not, make sure I am getting this. So, um, I plan on today reaching out to, there's two people at the state saying, hey, we need help. Tell us where we need to send these now.
Right.
Since we've done this.
And we don't need to wait to send it to the state for the ten-day advertising period, right?
My understanding, we have to give this to them, and then they're going to tell us something because it's going to matter how we list it in the advertisement.
Okay.
So once I find that out, then we have a ten-day.
Okay.
Yep.
Is this federal or state?
This is, uh, this is a, a state that was supposed to be done back in twenty-one.
So we've been in violation of some kind of regulation by the state for four years?
Well, um, our last election, it, it did not affect because they were not district. They were all at large, the council people were. In twenty-two, um, they were by district.
I know it wasn't you, but who was responsible for that?
It, it would have been the, uh, the clerk at that time.
So this, this.
I didn't take office until twenty-three.
This, this is going to correct that, and we'll get this squared away.
Yes, we'll correct that.
Okay, good.
I've got a question. Will the constituents' representation at the precinct level change between now and the next election through caucus? Or will it just be caught up at the next election?
Once, once everything is approved by the state and, um, when that's all done, then we'll have the, the Marion two, one and two. So there'll be a new one for Marion at that time. So they'll let us know when that can be done. And it, it should be done before the next election. But it will be on the ballot for the next election.
Will that be a two-party caucus then, since it wasn't on the last ballot, or how will that be done?
That's going to be, to me, yes, it, it would be, because there would be a Democrat and a Republican. But I haven't, and, and I'm, I'm guessing the parties are going to get some of that instructions because they deal with the caucus. So, um, but yes, I would, I would say yes.
Okay.
Good question, that's a good question. Any other department heads or elected officials?
So just so you know something that is going to be coming down the pipeline?
Ah, here we go.
Not quite yet, though. I'm working with DNR to update, to get some proposed updates to our floodplain ordinances and building codes because they are also out of date, and they are, do not comply with NFIP regulations.
Thank you.
So I'm working with DNR to get those updated.
Yeah, I, when they get updated, I'd like to see those. Thank you very much. Appreciate all you've been doing. Are you not, sit down, Chris, Diane's not done.
I, I, I know, sorry.
I know.
Do you guys need to make a motion, um, that we can change it, take the zero off if we need to before the next meeting? So that we don't have to wait?
We need to make a motion to do what?
If, if we have to amend the numbers, instead of a zero-one, it's just a one.
I'm, I'm, I'll make a motion if we have to amend the number to, to what?
Remove the zero. Remove the zero.
Remove the zero?
Yes.
But I'm making a motion to remove zero from what? What documents it called?
From the redistricting and the precinct.
From the?
Yes.
Do what now?
Because.
Let's start over. I'm, well, I'm going to make a motion that we're going to remove that zero from the docket, the resolution docket that we just passed.
If it's needed.
If it's needed.
By the state.
By the state.
Because instead of saying Marion zero-one, they may want it to say Marion one.
Well, if we need to remove that zero, let's just get it done by motion.
That's what I'm going to find out.
What do you think?
I'll second, I was confused on the zero, too.
I'm still confused, but we make a motion to get it removed if necessary.
Because what, what comes into play with that is the system and the maps. So everything has to match and go together. So depending on what they have is going to depend on if we have to change that.
So we could just put a one in there right now and don't worry about the zero?
Oh, boy. Yeah.
They're going to tell me if, if we have to do that.
I would, as Commissioner Hobbs proposed the motion, I, I wouldn't vote on that.
All right.
That, that way we, we can go either.
I'll second that, then. All in favor of what I just said, and I don't know what I said, say aye. Okay, any other department heads or elected officials?
Chris, ready to go in there?
I've got an account down at Onan County State Bank that has money deposited there for, um, insurance reimbursement. When we take someone to hospital, build their insurance.
Mm-hmm.
It goes into that account. Currently, uh, previous Commissioner Burton was on that account with me. So we need to, um, I would assume have a, a motion to remove him from that account. And, um, I have one of you guys placed on that account with me. As far as two people will be on the account, so, um, as historically has been Commissioner and myself.
Historically.
Historically.
Changes are coming.
So.
I just need to get that cleaned up so it doesn't, you know, two or three years down the road.
I understand.
Yeah.
I make a motion to remove Commissioner Burton from the bank account.
For the Onan County EMS.
For the Onan County EMS. And to add Commissioner Risk to that account.
I'll help you out, Chris, I'll second that.
All in favor? Two oh. There you go.
Thank you.
Is that it for you?
That's it.
No, don't, sit down. Okay. Any other department, I'm, I'm leaving the highway to the last because we've got something to talk about.
I got something.
You got something, Jack?
Something.
Hey, good. Good seat.
Actually, I got nothing from IDHS yet, from the PA union. No contact about any help, uh, through the, uh, recovery phase from the state or federal government yet. We're just at a standstill there. So that's really all I got for you in May, but Team Doughboy asked for good news.
Yes.
David Mills with ADA Consulting of Indiana, American Disabilities Act team. He's offered his talents to the team at, at no charge to take Chris's idea drawings, the very preliminary stuff that we had here the other day. And he, and David is a certified or, or what when it comes to, uh, drawings, architectural drawings, but he can, he can do that. So he can take the, the idea drawings, turn them into, I'm sure with the next, uh,
Like a blueprint?
What do they call that, are they construction drawings or?
Construction drawings.
And then a, uh, a contractor, or contractors can take us to, uh, preliminary costs. So we can finally kind of get an idea of what we're looking at here. David come down from Lafayette to do the assessment on the EMS. We showed him what we were doing at the Doughboy, just to kind of make sure we weren't too far out of bounds on any handicap accessibility stuff. And the number of ADA compliant issues with that little project kind of shocked Chris a lot. So we, we're not starting down the wrong path. We're, we're starting right, it's going to be ADA accessible, compliant, and, uh, should be, should be very good whenever David gets done.
Awesome.
So, uh, yeah, that was a, a huge, uh, offer to donate his time. He originally wanted to work some hours around, and he got thinking about it on the way home. He called me, goes, I'm going to donate my time, that's such a good project.
Where he's gone.
And we, we do have the account set up at the Community Foundation. So if anybody's got a check burning a hole in their pocket, get their pen out and relieve that pain. That's really all I got, unless you have any questions.
No, and I, I appreciate all your work you're doing on this, and you and Chris. I think this, the Doughboy thing, um, is bringing a lot of good people together, bringing the community together in the county. And once it kicks off, it's, it's going to be a wonderful project. And, uh, and the commissioners have got a challenge out there to, um, anybody. I think Diane, she talked about this morning, that, uh, take your money to the Community Foundation. Uh, the commissioners have put up five hundred dollars apiece for this project. You know, it's just a challenge to anybody, you don't have to put up five hundred dollars, five dollars, anything that you got because this, this is for the community. The guy that sculpted that Doughboy is from Onan County. It lives here, it's, it's, it's ties to the Onan County, so it's going to be a great project. And I, I like to see people jump on board, so if you've got an extra few dollars, go down to Community Foundation, leave them what you got. So, but I appreciate everybody's support on this.
Be nice to make that prerequisite for anybody who wants to caucus in, sit beside you guys, they got a, they got your check.
Well, I think if I said that, I'd probably end up getting in trouble. But, uh, yeah, that's, that way, attorney's like, he's, 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 don't even go there. So, but that is a, it is a good project, and I, uh, I thank Jack and Chris and everybody that's involved. There's a lot of people involved, spearheading, working on this project, Pat Conner and such, and so on.
And we are still at the, uh, in the phase where people can make suggestions, uh, voice concerns. There's, there's nothing yet. There's, there's nothing yet, no pun intended, concrete about our plans here. So.
Jack, is, is there any way that we can set up, because I, I would like to see this. And I talked to Chris, me and Chris talked about it a little bit, because I've had several phone calls, people calling me saying that we're gonna change the way the Doughboy looks. We're gonna, and I don't know where they heard that information from, but it's false. Is there any way, I understand that, is there any way that we can get in front of the commanders at the VFW and so on? And give them a little presentation of what's going on, what we plan on doing, like the drawings that Chris made up? Because me and Chris talked about it. That way they're more involved. I, I want our veterans, and I don't care if they're VFW or, it doesn't matter. I want our veterans more involved.
I'll let our veteran service officer speak to exactly what he's done, but we haven't addressed that. And also, the gentleman that come here tonight to kind of kick this whole thing off.
Lieutenant Colonel Retard.
Jeremy.
Jeremy Hutchins.
Jeremy Hutchins was supposed to reach out to other
Right.
military or veterans organizations that may not have the, as much of a presence as American Legion and VFW. But I know Dennis has attended meetings. I'll let him discuss what he's done there.
Okay. Alan, both, both meetings last, last month, I talked to both, both VFW and Legion. I didn't, of course, I didn't have charts and pictures that I think set the show, but I did discuss with them what the plan works. I didn't tell them we're changing anything on, on the Doughboy. I didn't tell them we just wanna take the plaques off, clean them up, put them back, clean up the stone, back over and, uh, kinda fix, fix the cracks and that, those sort of things. But I didn't tell them not to change any of the appearance of the Doughboy except of the landscaping.
What was their comment?
Uh, they were quite pleased with it.
I thought they would be. So, uh, if you would, Dennis, and get with Jack or Chris and maybe you take a, a copy of the kind of the layout, Jack, of what it's gonna kind of look at when you can, so they can just kind of look at, so they can kind of get a vision on what it's kind of gonna look at, you know?
Right.
I, it's gonna be a wonderful project. Like I say, we're not changing the sculpture or anything like that, or changing the stone. We're cleaning it, cleaning the plaques, and gonna improve the landscaping around it. So it's gonna be nice. I'm, I'm really looking forward to it.
Yeah, it's been said that we're, uh, we're kind of making a place to sit and enjoy the Doughboy instead of walk past it.
There you go.
There you go.
Yeah, so.
And as soon as we get something from David, drawing lies, kind of the next step, I'll be certain to get that to Dennis as soon as I can. So he can maybe get on their agenda again, attend those meetings and keep them updated.
Awesome. Any other department heads, elected officials?
Just for clarification for the public, it's on the agenda about the BCA board meeting, but we are not addressing that today.
I knew you was gonna bring it up. We, um, there has to be an appointment. Let me get my glasses on because I can't read it. The Plan Commission Board Appointment. Is that something, and Pam, you're here, you may have some insight on this. Is that a commissioner that has to be on this, or the commissioners appoint somebody from the citizens group?
Are you talking BZA or Plan Commission?
Plan Commission.
Plan Commission?
It says Plan Commission Appointment.
BZA. BZA Appointment, because you've already done your Plan.
Well, it doesn't say that here. It says Plan Commission Board Appointment. It doesn't say anything about BZA, so that's the reason I'm asking. Are we on the wrong? Yes.
I can answer that.
I, praise God.
Now, BZA may not be represented by an elected official. All members of the BZA must be public with no affiliation. The BZA appointments, this was proposed to prior council before you guys took over. The BZA representation by the ordinance says that one appointment must be made by the board of commissioners. So you actually make three appointments. One has to be a PC member that you appoint to the BZA board. Two appointments that you make must be public to the BZA board. The Plan Commission is also required to make one appointment to the BZA board, which cannot be the same appointment that you make. And the Plan Commission appointment must be from the public representation of the PC board. And that's what the ordinance states and what was proposed, proposed to the consultants when they were writing the UDO, was for them to review that and to clarify if our ordinance is compliant with current state statute. Because the state statute identifies the composition of an advisory BZA.
Okay.
So that may sound a little confusing for you, but that's why I brought it up, that it needs to be clarified before going forward. Because we've had this noncompliant problem for a couple of years. That is my understanding.
Okay. We'll table it till we.
Yeah, I, I gotta look at that.
We'll table that till the county attorney looks into it further. It's out of my league.
We just wanna make sure we get it done right, Pam. That's what we're doing. So we're, we're not stalling or anything. We're just trying to make sure we get all our ducks in a row.
And I just wanna add, the reason that's important is if anyone were to ever take a litigation against the BZA, the very first thing that will automatically win the case is if the board appointment has been done incorrectly. So that's why it's important.
Sure. Thank, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll get, uh, we'll get the county attorney to take a look at that. I'll wait till commissioners comment because I have a couple of things I want to say, like always, it seems like. Mr. Milton? You still wait, Chad? You haven't another donor? That'd fire you right up, I'm telling you.
Good morning, commissioners. First thing I need to just make you aware of, late yesterday afternoon, my crew was working on Mill Grove Road and trying to mitigate from the last flood. Long story short, after a little hike through the woods, we found that part of that problem was because of a dam breach. In fact, all of that problem was because of a dam breach. It was obvious that the dam had been repaired before, riprap and old tires and that kind of thing. But, um, it, it had breached again and sent water down and a lot of sediment and damaged the road. This is actually a place, David, that you called me about.
Right, right, right.
To work on the road. Um, I called Jack. It was determined that we needed to get DNR involved. I called DNR Law Enforcement in regard to the situation. And, um, late evening, I was able to determine that it's gonna be turned over to DNR Water Resources. I've also been advised, once we get a little farther down the road on this, I probably need to get the, all this information to the county attorney. It's in its infancy stage now, but I, I wanted to make you aware of that. It's hard to say, but the pond was of a, of a really good size, so.
Where's this located at here?
Uh, just down from the church on Mill Grove in that, that little swag.
Oh, okay.
I spoke to that gentleman. He says there's water there year round.
Um, so anyway, we've mitigated some circumstances there. Uh, we've got the water flowing. The culvert was just absolutely full of sediment from, from the pond, et cetera. But at, at least it's working now. It's probably gonna have to be at least two culverts in that location replaced. But we've got water off the road, mud off the road and.
Good.
But it's, it's working. Secondly, I believe the gentleman's first name's Kevin. I can't recall his last name. I could have that all wrong. I'm terrible with names. Uh, so if I do, I apologize in regard to the Hayden Road Project.
He's, he's, he's right here, Becker. Give it a right.
Anyway, long story short on that, commissioners, that area was truly devastated during the flash flooding. Those costs have been included in what we sent in to the Department of Homeland Security. So I, I'm, on that project, I'm just kind of waiting to hear where money's come from in regard to that. Now, that won't, um, commissioners, that won't address hard surface because as we know, it's back, back to, uh, what it should be.
Uh huh.
And it did not have a hard surface, so we'll have to address that after we know the other. That being said, we've still gotta go out there and get those ditches and pipes straightened up so the water's flowing. So I've actually spoken to him and he is aware that that's gonna happen.
He spoke to you about the Kevin, so you're good?
Yeah, I appreciate him going out, having a look at it, figuring out a way to get this done.
Okay. All right, good. So I'm glad to hear that. So, good.
Also, um, we heard, we've heard very little back from the Department of Homeland Security. Commissioners, we turned in over forty-five million dollars worth of estimates in regard to mitigation. And so everyone knows mitigation is improving, getting this back to a situation where we will not have that problem again. We did have contact back from them and the, they say that we have four million, five hundred thirty thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents at this point to be back to normal, not fixing anything. But those were the numbers they approved that said that would get us back to normal. It wasn't mitigating any problems.
No, this is just.
Wasn't fixing any problems.
Bring us back up to even.
That just, that's just back to even. I, I can't tell you.
How much was that?
Four million, five hundred thirty thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. Now, that was just what they said qualified. It didn't, I mean, it's like Jack. Nobody said we're getting anything. Nobody. It's just.
Well, normally what they'll do, they're, they're gonna probably shoot us a number, okay? And then we're, there's, it's not gonna be enough. It's gonna go back to the state. Then the state will go to the federals with it and then come back. So we're, it's gonna be a little time, gentlemen. I mean, this is not gonna be a fast process. I wish it was, but it's not gonna be.
We're used to that.
Okay. You know what it's like, Jack. It's the same deal, but at least the balls are off.
Good.
Greg, did he do any site visits or was that just based on what you submitted?
They made no site visits, Jack. That was just based on what was submitted. Kind of infer. Now, I can say, the commissioners, we have located many problems since that we could attribute directly to the flood. And there's, and Chad can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there's at least seven more that we need to add and send in at this point to add to that.
Does that include yesterday's?
That does not include yesterday's. That was prior to.
I encourage you to send those up as soon as you get the document.
Okay. Um, commissioners, in front of you, I, you know, after the flood, we had forty-four bridges that were either underwater or their main channels produced a massive flash flood and piled debris upon the bridges and in the main channels. And those were stopped up. We've made temporary repairs on all of those forty-four in regard to approaches. There needs to be further mitigation and there needs to be, um, bridge inspections. Reached out to our bridge consultants, United, and then WHC also provided documents as to what the bridges could be inspected for. I would ask that you review these and have some kind of decision after the attorney looks at them at the next meeting.
Good. I agree.
Thank you, Greg. The commission advised that, um, you wanted the Highway Department to check into tree trimming services, tree trimmers in Owen County that were interested in doing service for the county in regard to the CCMG roads that, um, we're getting ready to open bids on here. We have, at this point, identified nine that are within the county. Um, I've reached out and actually have spoken with, um, five. There's some of the phones that have been disconnected. So those companies may not be in business, but have lined out for Tuesday with the companies that have, out of the nine that said they were interested. They're gonna meet with me on Tuesday and we're going to the roads and actually walk and look and see what needs to be done.
You gonna take them as a group?
Yes. Um, that was, um, I mean, at the commission's pleasure, I mean, it sounded as if though we wanted everybody to work together.
Yes.
So that's what I'm gonna do, take everybody at one time.
Yep. I, I, I agree with that whole heart line. Working together is gonna be the key.
The other thing, and I know it's early, but I need to make you aware that the road grader leases that we have are coming due in February of 2026. The best I could figure out, this is the third cycle that the county has leased road graders. My first experience leasing road graders, but they've been leased twice before. They've been leased on three-year leases. This last one was a, a five-year lease with up to a thousand hours a year. Right now, both graders are within a couple of hundred hours of each other, of about thirty-four hundred hours on them. So, um, the five thousand hours, really, if we was choose to lease graders, again, we could probably drop a thousand hours off of that if, um, we needed to. Money is budgeted and has been budgeted for many years to lease road graders, if that is what this commission wishes to continue to do. Uh, the two that we have could be purchased, but they will be over a quarter of a million dollars, I would say, when that comes about. If the commission would rather for us to look for some road graders that are, are used and in good condition, we probably ought to start that, that search now because I believe it's on February sixth. If we decide not to lease, they will come pick them up. So, you know, we've got time. There have been some things changed since the last time they leased. At one time, when the last graders were leased, and I know this for a fact, gentlemen, that they would only lease the biggest grader that they had, which is more than Owen County.
Needs.
Really needs. At this point in time, they'll lease any road grader that they have, including, um, any road grader that they have, if it's Caterpillar, John Deere leases road graders, Kamatsu leases road graders. I mean, there's, there's many different options out there if you choose to lease again. But my suggestion would be if you choose to lease again, go with a smaller road grader, not the big monsters.
Yeah, I agree. Yes.
In reviewing commissioners' minutes since the time Mr. Burton sat on the board. In reviewing Commissioners' minutes since the time Mr. Burton sat on the board, there is reference to the current grader lease that at the end of the cycle of your grader lease, that the buyout will be one dollar. So I, I'm only referring to what I read in the minutes, but that might be something you look into. And I believe there were two road graders that were in a lease program and it, it definitely stated that it would be a one-dollar buyout at the end of that lease period. So again, that might be a typo, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
That, that is not my understanding, Commissioners, but if it says that, I'm not the person that signed the contract.
Bethany, pull that up. Pull up the contract and see what it says.
Yeah, I'm not the person that signed the contract. The Board of Commissioners' words, my understanding, the graders would be priced at market value, but if it says it's a dollar, then Commissioners advise you to buy them. Better buy, better buy them all.
Get on both, huh? We'll need, we'll look at that and see, we need to see what the contract says on that. How long was the lease for? Three?
Five years.
Five years? And we're up, we're gonna be up in 2026?
Yes.
For both of them?
Yes. They were leased at the same time.
Okay, okay.
Now, Commissioners, I will tell you, we searched and we were, the Highway Department was really never allowed to purchase anything used, but we had an old New Holland grader that we'd had since nineteen eighty-three that the county had purchased new and it was on its last leg and we were allowed to search for a used grader and it took us several months, but we did purchase an older grader. It was a one-twenty, which is a smaller grader than the leases. I, I can't tell you the exact price. I think we probably, a, a new one is several hundred thousand dollars. I think the county paid somewhere around a hundred, hundred and ten thousand for that grader, but that, we've kept that used machine up and going with very little problem, but we, we, we searched a long time before we settled on a machine. And had them inspected and et cetera.
I, I think we need, we do need to look at used equipment, but, but good used equipment. We don't need no junk. You know what I'm saying? Because I'm not so sold on the leasing part of things. I know it's due to financial strains and budget strains, we have to lease, but I think we need to look at some good, good used equipment.
Yes, sir.
As well.
Do you have anything else I need to add? Okay, I, the only other thing I have, Commissioners, I know that we have bids in for our CCMG projects.
We're here.
Nothing further.
County Attorney.
The auditor gave me a couple of bids that he received to do some county highway work. The two bids are from Milestone Contractors and E.B. paving. The milestone bid is for one million, nine hundred, six thousand, three hundred, seventy dollars and seventy-five cents. And the E.B. paving bid is for one million, eight hundred, eighty-seven thousand, three hundred, seventeen dollars and fifty-five cents. It would be my suggestion that this go to Mr. Morden and have this committee review and sort these bids and make a determination, which one is the better bid.
And for, how many, was this for all the community rosters?
Yes.
Everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
And that comes, it needed to be two million or below, so we will get there with the budget.
An addendum to this one about?
That is correct, about the time.
Okay.
Do, do we have that addendum? Is it in, is it in?
You wanna look at it and see?
Chicken.
I, I need, see, it was sent to all of them and I actually spoke to them, so, but let me look and see. I need to make sure.
Was addendums guys in, in the bids?
Commissioners, we could do one or two things. We've done business with both of these companies. But I'll need to review these. I could either take a bid and go out or we, and, and see if they're apples to apples. I can't do it in just a few minutes. It'll take me just a bit to do, or we could have a deadline that I have to have.
What's the deadline?
It's back here, like, June twenty-seventh.
Okay.
So.
I, I would like to, you know me, I don't wanna say anything I'm not supposed to say, but always ever say something I'm not supposed to say. Takes some time to look at this, but I want to meet with you guys over this because I know we got several road, how many roads we've done this year? Four, five, six?
Well, there's several projects, but it is Class Road, Kelly Road from two forty-six to Orman, Pleasant View Road from two forty-six to, I mean, Kelly Road to Denmark, Pleasant View from two forty-six to Orman, Anderson Road.
That's for next year, though?
That's for next year. I mean, they're all, but they're all included on this grant.
Okay, so my, in my question, and, and if I'm misspeaking, or I, I don't mean in the ill will here at all, you have two company, Milestone and E&amp;B?
Yes.
Okay, and the bids are fairly close and stuff like that, and you've worked with both of these?
I have.
Okay. And it's my goal as a Commissioner, it's like you did the tree trimming groups, you take them all out there together and you know, Johnny can start at one end, especially if you got a big road. Johnny starts at one end, Frank starts at the other, meets you in the middle, so to speak. Is there any reason that we cannot utilize both companies?
It has to be one or the other.
Really?
It's through the CCMG, yes.
So it has, you can't, you can't, you can't utilize?
We, we did this before. We attempted at one time to vote and, and split the roads and we were advised by the state, the state level could not do that. And we were unable to do that.
That's unfortunate. That's extremely unfortunate. Okay.
I mean, I could pick the telephone up and ask Tess again, but that's what we were advised the last time.
Please pick up the phone, call her again.
Okay.
And the reason I'm saying that is, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to make the best out of the situation here, you know, that we could utilize maybe both companies if we could. No different than the tree trimming people or whatever the, the case may be. Working together is, is the key to it. Now, if they say no, that you just gotta pick one or the other, okay, I understand it, but just call and ask to get a verification on that and you, you take those and our deadline is June what?
I, I have to have all, a, a signed document from the President of the Board of Commissioners to end dot by end of business day, June twenty-seventh, so I, I'd like for it to be before then, of course, but-
Well, absolutely. So, do you want to, to take these and our next meeting is not till the fifteenth? You want, that gives you two weeks? Is it gonna take you two weeks to go through and verify what you need to verify, or is there something we need to have a special meeting here next week to?
Well, we're just talking, I, the, the next meeting would be fine with me. I mean, instead of having-
It's two weeks.
We in general had a special meeting and discussed it, but I mean, I'm within the deadline, so you can do it at the next meeting.
Yeah, I don't think we need to have a special meeting. I, I mean, I really don't. I'm sure they wanna know what, who's gonna get-
Can I have those originals back?
Yes, you can.
And then I'll make you copy?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that, is that a fair, two weeks and come the next meeting and get, get that and that gives you plenty of time?
Yes.
Alright. That's what we'll do then. Cause I, I kinda wanna look at it too myself. Uh-oh. Judges here, everybody. Stand up, sit down, stand up, sit down, everybody. So, because I, I, being new at this, I'd kinda like to go through this as well myself and look at, look at some things on these bids and stuff like that, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
That'd give us time. So on May fifteenth, we'll, we'll make a decision.
Very good. Gentlemen, I have nothing further unless you have something for me.
No, appreciate all the hard work and stuff you're doing.
Thanks, guys.
I'll be probably getting, I know you guys got some stuff to do this afternoon. I, I, I need to get with you probably sometime later this afternoon. Greg, go over a couple of things, you and Chad, wanna talk to you about. But appreciate what you're doing, stuff like that, and keep moving forward.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks. Okay. It's almost public comment time. Almost, not quite. Almost. Judge brought something. Judge enters the room, probably pretty much take care of business first, so let's see what, see what the judge brought. Well, mercy. How does she get that in? Still in. Commissioners, I wanted to express my gratitude for your support and efforts in protecting Circuit Court Two from elimination as proposed on House Bill eleven forty-four. Your leadership is greatly appreciated. This is from Judge Hanlon. As law divines know, there was a bill on the floor, House Bill eleven forty-four, that was going to eliminate Circuit Court Two. That got pulled, so glad to hear that. Judge Hanlon will remain our judge. This was going to end at her end of her term in twenty twenty-six, but that got pulled. House Bill eleven forty-four is dead and so I'm glad because we do need Circuit Court Two. And she'll get to remain the state, so praise God for that. Okay. Any other department heads or elected officials?
I'm certain.
Are you elected official or department head? Just, you're not elected official or department head yet. Hang on. Go ahead.
I do have one request. In our election voter registration, there is a camera in there that will have to be removed because during election time, not everything is public.
Okay.
So I would like to have that camera removed from that office.
Call Hicon. Yeah, remove.
Okay.
I mean, that's your department, your office. You do what you see fit, okay?
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, we're getting ready to go to the public comment. Hang on, Pam. I know you got some stuff to say, but I got something to say. First of all, as everybody know, Commissioner Burton has resigned. Commissioner Burton sent out an email to us and if law divines don't know, his, his dad is, is not well at all. He's been sick for quite some time and we wish no ill at all, Commissioner Burton. I wanna thank him for his six-plus years that he served here. Being the Commissioner is not easy by no means. It's not, but in his letter, his family's got some health issues and, and stuff like that. He told me that, you know, his dad took care of him and he wants to be here to take care of his father. And so we wish Commissioner Burton and his family nothing but the best. Always in our prayers and I just wanna thank him for his service that he's had here. There will be a caucus for a new Commissioner in District One. I believe it's on May twenty-ninth. I believe I've got some people's name in the hat, so I just wanna bring that up. Also, I wanna bring up something. It's the last meeting. I'm very direct. I always say what's on my mind and I don't usually pull any punches and I won't today. There was, in no intention, intention on my part at the last meeting, when I spoke, about a situation, about the sheriff thing, I was not up here campaigning. Simple put. I don't apologize for what I say and I will not. I was simply addressing a statement that was addressed to me out in the open, so if, if people took it the wrong way, I, I didn't mean it to be that way, so I hope you understand, but I don't make apologies for what I said. Sheriff White did contact me and very gracious. We had a wonderful conversation and Sheriff and I are good and I appreciate him reaching out to me and, and, and calling me, but I'm gonna read something to you real quick and I'll move on. I'm, I'm not very good with writing stuff down and I'm not very good at choosing my words. Usually I'm hurting somebody's feelings or making somebody cry, but that's the reason Kleenex is a multimillion dollar business. But I got something sent to me that sums up a lot of things and I wanna read this to you and I won't tell you who sent it to me, but it sums up a lot of things that are happening when there's lack of communication or a lack of one-on-one conversation. If someone has an issue with you and they're telling everyone except you, they don't have a real issue with you. They just enjoy the attention they get from talking about you. Anybody like that? Copy that all? And I read, I had to read that a few times and I, I want everybody out there to know, everybody knows my phone number. Everybody knows where I live. I take calls all the time. If there's something you need from me or want to ask of me, please call me. Don't talk behind the scenes. Don't pretend that you know what's going on when you don't. Just come to me. I, I, I am as open as they come. I'll just tell you the honest truth. And you know, with that being said, I'll, I'll, I'll end it with that. You know, I'm just as open as they come. You may not like my answer, but please reach out to me instead of saying things off the wall or behind my back. Okay, please. And this, this is addressing everybody, not just here, but everybody out in the public. I'll answer any questions that you have. I'm done. Hard to believe. I heard somebody snigger, somebody laughing. Okay. Public comment. Pam, later, everybody.
I'm here representing the Owen County Veterans Memorial Park Board.
Yes.
On the decisions board. We did have a meeting scheduled today with the Commissioners that we understand has had to be postponed.
Yes.
But there are a few pending items that we need to draw your attention to. We have it driving, but first and foremost on this, as you review this, because we are asking for giving like a determination as to when you want the park board to come and present to the Commissioners. Is it under public comment or is it under the regular business? So it's listed in here for me. Please give direction and clarity to the park board so we know how to present feedback to you.
Okay.
What I have for you, these are just our talking notes that we were running through today and there's only three pages of interest. One is very specific to your attorney, leads to review.
Absolutely.
And in your spare time, this is the action items. They are time-sensitive and one of those does involve some tree trimming on Rocky Hill that we wanna make sure- Hill, that we want to make sure that you can just make sure that the Highway Department does not trim trees until you answer the question. But that goes over what our talking points were.
Okay.
And background information and the history to explain what has led up to where we are today and to ask the county to get clarification as to what board is which and how you want us to proceed.
Okay.
Then I have a thumb drive that I'll be giving to Beth. This thumb drive contains information for John Reeves, the environmentalist. The county was never informed by the government when they came out to do the inspection of the park land and to clear it from military land usage for hazards and ordinances. And it is, we believe, because they listed as being owned by the town of Spencer. So I included those documents because that may be important with things to come forward, but you at least have what we're going to discuss with you today very briefly and that would allow you then to engage us by phone if that's more convenient with your time, depending on the setting matter. So hopefully that was an efficient way to give this to you. And then also personally, I'd like to thank the Highway Department, they did a stellar job, they came out to Clark Road where several people had commented on the abyss, black holes that were significant, and they did a great job getting that repaired, so thank you.
Good job, thank you guys. Okay, thank you Pam for this information. Give us time to review this, okay?
Yes, and the thumb drive contains a copy of all the files for the county and for John, because I'm sure our attorney will want to have a copy, because those do not exist anywhere in the county that was provided by the government.
Good. Well, let the County Attorney in his spare time, which he seems to have a lot of, sorry. Yes, you gotta laugh, keep from crying sometimes. We'll take this, under advisement Pam, we'll get this reviewed, let the County Attorney review it and get back with you as soon as possible, okay? Thank you.
Can we schedule a meeting?
Yes. Once we, yes, we'll schedule a meeting with you. I'd rather have a one-on-one session than, I'm not big on the email text stuff. I get like thirty-seven emails a day and to be honest with you, I can't keep up. So anybody else in the public? I do want to recognize, I believe, Mr. Wright. I'm getting this, I have to look up, National Day of Prayer service is six o'clock night at the Nazarene Church, is that correct, sir?
Yes, all the churches are invited. I'm not part of the Nazarene, I'm part of the Baptist.
Right.
Invited all the churches over there, it's Saturday at six.
Six o'clock at the Nazarene Church, invites everybody to there. Also, do want to state that on the fourth Saturday of every month, we had a prayer service out there on the courthouse lawn. It's at ten o'clock every fourth Saturday. We have prayer service out on the courthouse lawn, so if you can make it, stop by on a Saturday, on the fourth Saturday at ten o'clock and please join us. Anybody else from the public? Okay, and I got two dispatchers back there and I'm not picking onions at all. I appreciate you being here, I really do. What can I help you, you got anything? Anything you want to talk about, discuss?
We already have all of our-
In general, yeah, well, and you guys know how that's proceeding, okay? Are you guys okay with that?
Yes, sir.
You understand where I'm coming from?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, public, I can't tell you too much about it, but we're taking, we're, okay, good. Anybody else got anything? Alan, good to see you, buddy.
Thank you.
Where you been, man?
He's been hiding now.
Haven't seen you for a year. Doing okay?
Hey, I got a lot of things going on.
Me and you both. Me and you both. I want to thank everybody. We are moving forward, the county's moving forward in a good direction, sometimes slower than we want it to be. You know, it's tough situation, we've got some tough things going on, but we've got a lot of good people working in this county, working together, far as elected and employees, but as well as the taxpayers themselves. You guys come to the meetings, I greatly appreciate it. Got a wonderful attorney, you know, appreciate everything he's doing, he's been kinda overloaded with stuff the first, but hopefully things will start panning out just a little bit. Oh, I knew there was something. State Board of Counts was here, we, last week, we went over some ARPA information. They will be back in two weeks and we're going to go through twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-three budget stuff. I say this in a couple of meetings, I'll say it again. Of course, we've been dealing with some highway issues and Greg knows exactly what I'm talking about. We're gonna be looking at every contract, appropriation, transfer. We've got some issues going on that we're dealing with at the county highway financially. We're starting to, we are moving in the right direction. We're getting a upper hand on a couple of things, especially some finance stuff. Sheila, I want to thank Sheila for all of her hard work, what a blessing she's been and she's found out some things from the highway side of things that, you know, there's no money stolen, nobody stole any money. It's just, I think of lack of knowing what to do, when to do it and how to do it and where it comes from, where it goes, how to move it from here, or there's different funds and line items and stuff like that. Got a lot of things to get worked out, but we're gonna get it worked out on, for all department heads, all department heads and your, sorry Jack, you're by yourself, so, all department heads, I cannot make this mandatory for elected officials, but I would like to see as many elected officials, appointed people, department heads on May twenty-second. Write this down because you will be here. From nine to four. The Association of Indiana Counties is coming down, sending an expert, that's what they said, an expert, to go over and facilitate some budget training. I suggest to anybody, all appointed people has to come, you don't have, you gotta come. And you're, whoever in your department that's going to be doing anything with budget stuff, numbers, funds, claims, stuff like that, gonna be at this meeting. I don't care if you have to shut your department down. You be at this meeting, it's nine to four, all day, and if we have to have a second day, we'll schedule a second day. But May twenty-second, nine to four, Commissioners will be here. Dave and I do have a mandatory meeting at ten o'clock on May twenty-second that we have to attend, so we'll miss some of this. As soon as our meeting is over, we will be back to be with you, because we need to know just as much about the budget stuff as evians do. Okay, it starts right here. So this is for everybody, every elected official, please try to come to this meeting on May twenty-second. It's gonna be, you know, it's training, so we need to be at as much training as possible. Mr. Turner, you got anything?
No.
Anybody from public got anything? Has everybody had a donut?
No.
No.
There's a bunch of them.
Now, wait, 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 I seen you come around and get two, one of your first scar hair.
I've got one set over there on a napkin that has my name on it.
On a napkin?
Unless I grab it real quick.
Yeah. Crazy joy.
That's it.
Oh, I'll be, that's two hours, shortest meeting we've had.
I'm proud of you, Sam, we're in. I'm proud of you.
The jail, jail project, I know we have a couple of people here in the back, we got DLZ back here, thanks for coming. Hi Tammy, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Oh, I'm blessed. So the jail project, there's going to be some soon discussions on the jail project. Try not to let Cat out of the bag too much. There's gonna be some upcoming discussions about the jail project, okay? I'll leave it at that, that is going to involve, we don't know exactly who we're going with, what we're going to do, stuff like that, we're still investigating a couple of things, but I think we'll probably have some answers about the jail project, hopefully at the next meeting, if not at the next meeting, by the first meeting in June. We're moving on with the jail project. We gotta have a jail. We're going to have a jail. We're not gonna delay it. I know we've got some financial problems, but the jail is a huge financial problem that we've had for years and we're moving forward with the jail, so either next meeting or the first meeting in June, we'll have some answers on the jail. Anybody else got anything? Remember National Day of Prayer, give thanks to the good Lord, thanks to each other, meetings adjourned.